To order and let the record reflect it to exactly 4:30. So, the first item on the agenda is the fiscal presentation, the fiscal 2025-26 budget, proposed budget.
All right, thank you Mayor. So, as I told you guys last time, this is going to be your proposed budget. So, I'll give you what's been proposed and recommended by myself and staff. Then, we've got the August, the next August meeting, which is August 26th, I believe. Today's the 12th, yeah, 26th. And then, we have September 9th to change anything that you guys want to change in between that. So, you guys have heard from every single department on what they've requested. Now, this is what I was able to fit in with what we have from a property tax standpoint, capital standpoint, those kind of things. So, I'll go through that, but mind you, this is your budget. This is not my budget. This is just our recommendations for the budget. And then, the next meeting, we will also have the normal sheet that we have for you where you can take things out and put things in to see how the numbers look back and forth. So, we'll have that for the next meeting as well, and we'll have that for the September 9th if you guys see that you need it. So, we'll have that. I can also send that to you guys once I get it completed, probably in the next couple of days, I'll get that completed, and then you guys could, if you wanted to, you guys can play with that. And then, also, after this meeting tonight, the budget is posted on the website, and so I will send you guys that link. So, if you want to look at anything, it dives down further into any of the person, not necessarily person, but the personnel numbers, the contracted services numbers, any numbers like that that you guys want to see, the debt, it's basically the whole entire budget for to look at. Because right now, you're only going to get a snapshot of what we've got in there and then kind of the high view of it, but once you get into that budget book and you see anything. And along the way, if you have any questions, just please let me know. If it's questions you want to ask in the public, that's fine, but if I have time to prepare them beforehand, that's also helpful so that we can talk through it through that. So, if you have any questions, just let me know along the way in this whole entire month. It's a lot of information, mind you. We've been working on it since February when we started the capital process of doing all that, and then, of course, I've been working on it the last couple of months, meeting with every department. So, I know all of this stuff, whereas you guys are just getting snapshots of it. So, please ask any questions. That's what we're here for, that's what we're here to do. So, in saying that, I'll go ahead and start. So, like I said tonight, you guys get presented the proposed budget, and then we'll have all of our hearings for tax rate for the budget. Once you have those hearings, then you'll be able to adopt the budget, ratify the tax rate, and also adopt the tax rate. Overall, we're in a strong financial position with fund balances. For this budget that you'll see presented to you tonight, it's at 17% of expenses for general fund. Our policy is to stay between 15% and 20%. So, if we get below the 15% mark, then obviously we have to have plans within that next budget year to get above, in between that 15. If you're over the 20%, then you have to get it down in that, according to the city's own financial policies. Sales tax revenue growth, I projected or forecasted for next year 6% over the projected of what we are planning to receive. There's another, there's a couple, I also, I usually project about 3% just because sales tax is so unpredictable. Sometimes it just depends. But we have a few new restaurants that'll possibly be coming online next year, Cinemark coming online next year, hopefully, and those kind of things. So, I kind of forecasted a little bit higher than we normally do. So, I think it's still a conservative number as far as sales tax, but overall, it's 8.24% over what we budgeted last year. The net taxable property value growth of 4.68, that's a little bit lower than we normally at. We're normally in the 6% range over the last couple of years, so it's a little bit lower. The new value tax increase by 26%, that's quite a big increase from past years, and so that's a good sign. Rate increase for water and sewer of 10%, that's along with our water rate study and all the capital things that we're going to be doing in the future when I come to you guys in 2026 for that second phase, mostly for our wastewater treatment plan expansion, and then a couple of other projects that we'll have within that, the Phase 2 of the bond that we originally. So, that's in line with that, no differences there. And then, we did have a conversation, Uriah did, with our insurance broker, and he feels like, I know we started at 10% for the health insurance, but our original renewal came back from Blue Cross Blue Shield around 9%, and so that's lower than he originally thought. So, he felt he can negotiate it down to 5%, which he says this is still a very, very safe number. So, we feel pretty good about the 5% health insurance rate increase. Just an overview, we've got the operations and maintenance, what we call the O&amp;M, which is that's what we operate on with salaries, contracted services, anything like that to operate the city, that's what we do with O&amp;M. INS is our debt payments, so that INS rate is the one that does not change. It stays static. We have to pay our debt no matter what with our tax funds. And then, that makes up your whole entire tax rate, which is your O&amp;M and your INS rate. And then, of the tax rate, it'll generate for 1 cent, $350,222, that's at 101% collections, which we've been averaging over the last two years, and about 100% the year before that. So, that's up from 3.27, 9.41. And then, of course, if you guys remember the no new revenue rate, that's going to be your rate that you get the exact dollars, the same revenue that you get based on last year's appraisal. So, that takes out all the new property, anything like that, and so basically, you're going to collect the same amount of revenue. So, there's a couple of rules there, which I won't read to you because they get pretty boring, but you know, there's some posting rules. If you're above your no new revenue rate, then you have to go to your voters. If you're below, you're at or you're below, then there's nothing else you need to do. You're perfectly fine. So, down that very bottom line, the no new revenue, no new revenue rate for us is .593802 or .035802 cents over our proposed tax rate. I left the proposed tax rate exactly where it was. That's equal to about $1.2 million in revenue. So, any questions about that? And then, this is just kind of a graphic to show you if your appraised values go up, your no new revenue rate goes down. If your appraised values go down, your no new revenue rate goes up, or it can stay balanced. I know our appraised values went up, but if you look at, when you break down and you look at our taxes, our new value went really, really high, so you take that out from our appraisals, and then also, you take out the TERS value too. The TERS value went up by almost 100 million from the previous year. So, there's a couple, there's a couple of items in there. So, our appraisals didn't go down, so that's not why our no new revenue, but our new went up. So, basically, it stayed balanced because we had so much increase in our new, if that makes sense. And then, this is just a history of our, just our tax rate. So, you'll see in 2025, stayed exactly where it was, and it looks like since 2016, it's been on the downhill swing. So, that's something to be proud of, from the council standpoint, it's pretty much stayed either lowered or stayed. And then, this is a comparison between your adopted tax rate and your no new revenue tax rate. So, you'll see the blue line is going to be your no new revenue rate, and then your tax rate is going to be that green line there. So, just kind of give you a visual perspective of that. And then, obviously, we've never had to deal with the voter approval tax rate, but that's if, that gives you permission to go 3.5% above what you were able to raise from the previous year. If you go above that 3.5%, then the tax rate has to go to a vote for the voters. We've never gotten to that point, thankfully, so we've been in a good shape, so we really never even, excuse me, we never even deal with that. The legislature's trying to lower that still, there's still been legislation, this year didn't pass this year, thankfully, but I'm assuming it'll still keep coming up from that standpoint. And then, this is an overall look at the 2024 tax rate, so the percentages haven't changed much. So, 47% is going to be your school taxes, 27% the city taxes, 60% Hunt County, and then 10% at the hospital district taxes. So, overall, if you live in the city of Greenville, you're going to pay a little over $2 on your house, $2 in taxes per 100 for your house, if that makes sense. And then, this is our certified property taxes, which we received July 25th. So, you, like I said at the beginning, there's a 4.8% increase in your net taxable. There's your new value added, it went from 134 million to 169 million, so there's your 26% increase. Tax rate stayed flat, no increase there. Your no new revenue rate went from .558383 last year to .593802, which is a 6.3% increase. And then, operations and maintenance went up about 2.4%, but on the other side, it was just shifted from INS, which INS went down, our debt payments went down from a little over 11 million to a little, about 10.6 million. So, that 2.4 shift just shifted to our O&amp;M. So, just slight increases there. What you get for your money, so this is just based on a 200,000 home, nothing else, just in 200,000 divided by our tax rate, so it's about $3.05 a day is what you pay in taxes. So, just comparing some of that to your cell phone, which is about 3.75 per day, your electric bill, you've got your utility bill on there, which is 2.73, and then all those items you get down there for your property taxes. You get police, fire, public service education, emergency management, you get all the library services, your senior programs and equipment, your roadway, your sidewalks, your ADA compliance, special events at parks in downtown, things like that. So, and recreation facilities, obviously, we also have the rec fund, but those are all the items that you receive for $3 a day. And then, that's just kind of a pie chart of all that, which $1.29 of that is mostly public safety, .63 is your debt, and then all those other small things. And then, this is a summary of your fund balance. So, if you'll look, this has every single fund that the city has, the general fund's going to be there at the top, and I'll have a separate one to show that. There's only the general fund, you've got your debt service fund, your water, and then your airport that have fund balance policies. So, there's certain amount of, usually, it's of your expenses. So, like, the general fund is the 17% of expenses is what you have to, what you have to keep in your fund balance as a minimum. For your debt service fund, it's 1/12 of next year's debt payment, so you've got to do a 12th of that, so that's where that comes out too. And then, your water and sewer is 18% minus your debt payments, and then your airport fund, ooh, I knew I was going to forget that one, I think it's 20%. So, we're all in good shape, we meet all of those. If, overall, at the bottom, you'll see there, total revenues are 118,477,254, and then your total expenses are 119,479,108. So, our fund balance did go down slightly from 35,764,727 to 34,762,873. This is going to be just your enterprise funds, so which is going to be water, sewer, utility capital, airport, internal service, golf, and then sanitation. So, I don't know why, I don't see recreation on there. Anyway, so that's just your summary of fund balance, they call it retained earnings just because it's a different, different kind of funds, but overall, there to your totals, you'll see is kind of a 0% change in retained earnings there. So, went a little bit, a little over 19 million, it was a slight change, and it went up to a little over 19 million. So, there was just a slight change there, nothing, nothing too earth shattering there. Water and sewer being the largest fund on the enterprise funds.
Can we go back just a sec?
Uh huh.
Why does the golf fund end up negative?
Is it what?
Why does the golf fund end up negative?
I think golf funds always negative. It doesn't make any money.
Okay.
Yeah. We've talked about that a couple of years, but yes, it's typically-
I think I probably asked the same question last year.
Yeah. It's typically, I mean, last year, retained earnings, we started at like 20,000, but then what we're projecting for revenues this year versus what the expenses are projected, that's where you ended up losing there. If you remember, last year, we changed some of those folks from part-time to full-time, so that made a little bit of a difference there. So, yes. That, and you'll see, if you'll see, the rec fund there as well, obviously, with this year, this year kind of put us, you know, a little bit further behind, obviously, because we didn't have, we hired some people this year, but we didn't have the income coming in, so I think that one will change a little bit. Now, from the general fund, you can always bail out any of these funds if you'd like to. So, if you want them to say, then we're going to have to take it from that general fund number and then kick it down to those other ones. So, you're, you know, we've done that in the past before as well, so. So, but yeah, really, your golf, if you look at the venue management, obviously, the venue, we didn't have it open, so it put us a little bit further behind this year, so we'll have to kind of work those, see how it goes next year, and then we can do that. But at any time, like I said, you could definitely bail any of those funds out, which-
I mean, at some point, you kind of have to bail them out, don't you?
Yeah, you don't want to get them too far, so it's kind of whatever, whatever council feels comfortable with them being at a loss. You know, they've never gotten too far as far as, you know, their ending fund balance, so it's completely up to you guys. You know, if you look overall at the bottom line, I mean, the bottom line, we're still fine, but, but yes, we definitely, you know, you could always shift it wherever you, if you, if you didn't want it to get, you know, say you had it, you didn't want it to get below half, you know, 500,000, or you didn't want it to get above 300,000, or whatever, you know, whatever you guys decided, that's completely up to you as council. So, now, we did add, you know, especially in that rec fund, we added, you know, we added 80, or actually funded 60 part-time positions for six months. So, that's quite a bit for next year. Then, the next year, that'll change, but obviously, then we'll have more income coming in, so, so we'd have to kind of play it by ear and see, see what we bring in, see how it does. So. Okay, yeah, golf, we talked about that one. And then, this is just your governmental funds, which is your general fund, your debt service, your special revenue, and then your capital projects, and that was a slight decrease overall, at the total there was, went from budgeted fund balance at the beginning of the year, 15, a little over 15 million, down to 14.7 million. The biggest one being on the general fund, which we're still within, even though the fund balance decreased, we're still within the 17% that we're required to be in, so it's not, not an issue based on our policies. And then, there's your overall general fund. So, let's see, we project 930,25 to be 8.8 million for our fund balance, we propose in a little over 39 million in revenues, and then expenditures of 41 million. So, our proposed fund balance at the end of the year, we would propose to be 7,16521, which the requirement, so that's going to be 17% of that 41 million, which is 7,11,673. So, we're about $4,848 currently above our fund balance in the general fund. This is going to be our current tax-supported debt service, we didn't, we haven't, this hasn't changed. We didn't take on any tax-supported debt since the recreation center, so 2024 was the last time we took on that. So, nothing has changed here as far as, as tax-supported debt. This is the staffing plan, so what's built into the numbers that you see tonight is a merit raise of 5%, which overall, over all the funds is 1,108,255, broken down by general fund at 786,240. Water wastewater fund was 201,565, and then other funds were 120,450. So, we still included the sign-on retention and spot bonuses, which those are still important in what Uriah is doing with recruiting and things like that, so that's still very useful, very important. The base, 1% base pay increase over all the funds, Costa, about 224,000, 1% base increase in the merit for general fund is 157,000. And then, we did do a little over 100,000, about 123,000 of pay plan adjustments. So, we adjusted those folks' book pre-merit adjustments is what I'm talking about. So, you know, if they were in a pay grade that they were too low based on what, so what Uriah tried to do with every single, we went through this with every department, is everyone that was currently in their position, she tried to get them in an average range of the metroplex cities, of our comparison cities, competitive cities, so she tried to get them in those range, and that's where it turned out to be. If you need a breakdown of that, I could certainly send that to you if you'd like to see it. But we did that over every single, every single fund, every employee, and we looked at them. And then, this was the personnel that was requested. So, you've got three, an operations lieutenant, two police officers, a parks planning coordinator, and then, of course, we've got the 60 part-times in the rec center, seven for the sports park, full-time, that'd be seven, library programmer, and the court clerk, we just shifted them from part-time to full-time. The communications manager was added in my department, human resource specialist for nine months in the human resources department, the assistant community development director in community development, and then we included a computer user support specialist for six months to help with the recreation center side of things. And then, we shifted the box office coordinator from part-time to full-time. So, that was what requested, that is what is proposed, we didn't take anything out, everything, we left everything that was requested in there that you guys have seen. So, that's a little over, not quite 2 million, 1,987,098 for the cost, and that's over all the funds, because some of those are in the venue fund, the rec center fund and things like that, so there's a different breakdown there. So, that's not all in the general fund. And then, this is just a history of the salary adjustments that council has approved in the past. So, it's never been, hadn't been below 5% since 2021, which is thankfully, we appreciate all of that, so it hasn't been below that. So, in this one, we put in 5%. And then, general fund revenue, there's, you can see your comparisons, property tax, your difference in your sales tax, your franchise fees, your licensing and permitting, and then other revenue, which can be transfers, cost allocations, anything like that. So, there's your 34,78460 compared to your 39,412,730, and that's budget numbers. So, what I included in the general fund CIP was the Spillman New and Virtual Environment, the Axon Taser replacement, the six SCBA units for the fire department, we had the animal control safety upgrades and the dog kennel installation out at the animal control shelter, included the farmer's market awning, and then the HVAC for the municipal living. So, total of all of that is 706,906. This is all coming out of the general fund. And then, the non-general fund CIP, we included GMA lobby bathroom remodel at 175,000, so that would be the bathrooms up front. If you've been in those, they're just, they're just outdated, that's really it, so we just need to update those. And then, the water wastewater, this is, this will be non-bond funding, so this is coming out of the water wastewater fund, would be the Bowie Street Sewer Placement, Park Street Sewer, the wrought iron fencing for the water treatment plant facility, so that includes pump stations, things like that, the reservoir number six dock, and then the surveillance video out at the wastewater treatment plant. So, that came out to 1,565. And then, of course, the pay as you go capital, this has been the same, nothing changed here, fire truck replacement, the valley gutter sidewalk, the drainage improvements, the HVAC replacement, and the IT computer replacement. So, nothing changed there from last year's budget. And then, I know this is a lot of information, but these are each one of the items and they fit, how they fit into the goals for the city council, so, and then the cost over there to the right-hand side. So, this was everything from, let's see, from the auditorium events to the fly-in, the GMA restroom route out, so it's not just CIP, it's just kind of everything that we've put into the budget that fits into what council goals are that you guys approved. So, there's a second part of it, public safety, there's all the public safety items there, Major's Road, those, some of those are on there because we still have not completed those, like Major's Road would be one of them, the master plan for the south side of the airport, let's see, the farmer's market awnings on there, downtown plan, things like that. So, other items included tourism funding, which includes 45,000 for Main Street, 50,000 for tourism, and then 3,000 for the sports tournament, and then the non-governmental funding, we left in there at 47,000. And so, overall, of this one, those numbers are supposed to be farther to the right, that didn't turn out the same, but, so general fund was 706, water wastewater was 1,565, the vehicle fund, which includes all our enterprise, everything like that, is 2.4 million, and then venue management fund is 87.5, and then tourism fund is 87.5 for the capital improvement. And then, here's a snapshot of enterprise, which is going to be for 25, 26, 1,705,300. And then here's a snapshot of enterprise, which is going to be um, for twenty-five twenty-six, one million seven oh five three fifty-four. So of our existing leases, that's a hundred and thirty-three vehicles, um, a little over one point six million. We are requesting twelve additional vehicles, um, which include uh, police, parks. Um, there's a few on the, uh, there's one for the downtown gentleman, things like that. Um, so all the new people that we're requesting, that would include those. So those new vehicles are a cost of three eighty-two and five ninety. Um, we have an equity offset of three eleven, so it was about seventy thousand that we added to the current lease, which was pretty good. And then we also have the future offset down there of older vehicles and equipment to sell. So we've got, we've got some larger items to sell there. Um, so it could be in the range of two hundred to two hundred and fifty that we'd get back there. So that fund is doing really well. The enterprise is doing exactly what it should be doing. Um, I think, and I'll double check, I'm not, I think when we started enterprise, we had about a hundred and forty-five vehicles. So we're pretty close. We've added some over the years, obviously. So, but we're getting pretty close to being completely enterprise vehicles. So if we're not close, we're really close. Um, and then here's the equipment that we've got built in um, to that. We've got two dump trucks for the street department, a street sweeper um, that we would like to lease at ninety-one thousand a year. Um, we've got a couple tractors for the utility department, uh, skid steer for the wastewater treatment, um, a skid steer attachment and a walk-behind stall for the utilities department. So we've got that built in onto this budget as well. And then that's all I had. If you guys have any questions.
Uh, maybe I missed it. I'm just curious. On the street department, they were asking for trailer with the equipment for doing road work. Is that included in here?
It is not, no, no. Um, they, they did ask for that. We could put that in there, that's up to you. But um, when I talked to our fleet, these dump trucks were more important to replace than to add that additional equipment.
Wasn't there another piece of equipment, um, something that, um, maybe that was the paint heating?
Oh, the pre-melter? Yes, yeah, that was in there as well, but I did not include it in this now. The only two items that I was able to fit, well, that I proposed were the dump trucks for the street and the street sweeper. So that street sweeper really needs to be, and we're, we're planning on leasing it. Um, the street sweeper cost by itself, um, hmm, three hundred and fifty thousand if we buy it outright. So it's pretty expensive. But we certainly, we could switch any, and I'll have that on that sheet if you want to switch any of that in and out of there. But after speaking with my uh, my fleet superintendent, that was the recommendation to, to replace these dump trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we can certainly change that. It's, it's up to you.
No, I just, I'm curious. Um, I know a lot of citizens, like the number one complaint is street stuff. And anything that I can do or we can do to address any street issues, um, always appreciated.
Okay.
Or so, um, I don't know if there's room in there, look at it or, or what to move around, but um, I don't know. It'd just be a conversation to have.
Certainly, yeah, no problems.
Follow up with that, I don't know if um, it was brought up to the council, but I, um, you looked into it for me. But it was like a, a small batch mix truck that would basically just for pothole fixing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that um. It, not openly it wasn't, but I had a discussion with our um, so if that's the direction, I mean, our street. Um, I think our street department certainly would be able to do that. We'd obviously have to train on that. So there'd be a learning curve there, because that's a different piece of equipment that we've had before. And I think, if I remember, I think it, it was around the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range as well, uh, for that, the po- that, that one that you were talking about.
And I think that may have been just the equipment, not the.
Yeah, not the truck itself, yeah, so.
But it's something that could help.
Yeah, it certainly could, yeah. So, um, you know, we're, uh, and that was just potholes. So, oh, and they did have the um, the machine in there and I, it's left my brain now. But you know, where we could uh, you know, patch the small streets, our mill and overlay the po- the smaller streets ourselves. So we could, we certainly could include that in there as well. So, but you know, it's kind of a give or take, what, what would you rather have in there? Um, so we certainly could do those, those kind of things.
Can we look at what we're paying outside services to do those, to compare what that would be over a year?
Yeah, we could. Yeah, we certainly could. I mean, that'd be easy enough to do. I mean, I've had a couple of, I mean, not the, you know, I think what we did over on Molton Street for those two patches was about thirty thousand dollars. Um, obviously they did it in a day, so that's a, that's the difference. And they have the, the staff and things, so we'd, we'd certainly have to um, look at that for sure. But that's something we can, we can definitely look at comparative. So I can bring that to you guys next meeting.
Any, any other questions?
I guess the, the only other comment I have, um, you had some stuff in there um, under fleet with like, if we, I guess the future offset?
Yeah.
Um, one thing I've, I've talked to the um, fire about is a blocker truck. We can maybe get I thirty and the amount of curbs and overpasses we have. I just think for the safety of our, both our personnel and our equipment, um, if we ever have like a dump truck or something that we can convert to a blocker truck instead of using one of our apparatuses.
Okay. I mean, yeah, instead of selling one of those older ones, we certainly could do that. Be easy enough to do.
Really like to focus on that in the future.
I think you could get Chief Powell's input on that also. He spoke to it recently. Thoughts on that, so? In his input.
Anything else?
Okay, if there's, if there's nothing else, we'll go into executive session at uh, five oh one uh, this afternoon. We'll be back at six o'clock.
Check to see the ATM. Uh, maybe.
Um, I lost my train and I stopped talking.
You can use what?
Yeah, I understand.
An MC? Sure, if you want. That's it. Hello? Does that movement?
I was gonna do the end and spell those words.
What is it? Do the ad? I know that's ad.
Or briefly.
He has occasionally. Like the one too, we are asked to do talks.
Oh.
So when you've got three hundred people looking at you.
This is much simpler.
Yes! Yeah, when TechStar or whoever put sign up for the fifth and sixth about thirty-four being closed. A lot of people didn't know why. And I figured it out when it was done. But I avoided it because you never know how long it's gonna be. They were putting a new. I know, I made two trips.
Yeah, exactly.
I was there.
I've been challenged to use the. It's the first time ever.
Nobody else knew it was there. It was somebody that heard it.
Oh, it's put it up here then, okay. There you go. Hear ye, hear ye. Let the record, this is, uh, welcome to the group record session of Greenville City Council. Let the record reflect, it's about 6:05. I'll call this meeting to order and ask the library director, John Hayden, to offer the invocation. John, please come forward and thank you.
Uh, let us pray. Uh, dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. Thanks so much for a little bit of the rain outside right now, Father. We, we thank you for our friends and our family. Thank you for all the blessings you give us every day of, of be able to be here, Father. And I ask you to thank you for the mayor and the city council, bless them and to make the decisions for the city. Make, help them make wise decisions, Father. Also bless their families, Lord, as well as there's, as they take on this leadership role in, in the city, Father. We ask you to be with the students and the teachers who are all going back to school the last week and this week. And, and bless them and their endeavors for this year. Bless the Iron Lions, the Soiler Team, and then Australia and give them, hope them have a good job, a good time there. Want a, want a great adventure for them to be part of that. And just thank you so much for everything and, and thank you very much for just blessing us, especially your son, Jesus, in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Proclamation tonight to honor the life and achievements of Billy Cook. So if, uh, some of people are in the audience, if you'd come forward, we'll, we certainly would appreciate it. Thank you. And, uh, would like for you to introduce yourselves, if you would.
Nancy Sasser.
Nancy.
I'm Earl Sasser.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And, uh, we're honored to have you here. Would you like to talk a little bit about this saddle? Yep, cool. You have anything you'd like to, like to say about that? Tell us a little bit about it.
I wouldn't know what to say.
Oh, okay.
It's a Billy, it's a Billy Cook Roper. Um, it was one of the most popular models that Billy Cook made. Uh, and, um, he started building saddles in about 1953. And this was one of the saddles that he designed and came up with. He had, uh, help from a real good cowboy and horseman, L. N. Sykes. And they designed a saddle and kind of revolutionized the way saddle building and saddles were built. They fit a horse really good and, um, Billy's popularity just really grew. There probably wouldn't a cowboy or cowgirl going down the road in the 60s, 70s, and 80s that didn't know where Greenville, Texas and Billy Cook Saddlery was. And, uh, I guess at its height, they were probably building 1,200 saddles a month. And in 1986, I think the 5,000th model of this one, uh, was built, the Billy Cook Roper. So.
Well, that's pretty interesting. I have a question for you because I grew up on a small farm and ranch in western Oklahoma. And I had a horse named Lady and I had a saddle with a wonder tree. Have you ever heard of a wonder tree? Never been able, anybody to find that.
I have, but I'm not real familiar with that.
We can take that up later then.
Okay.
I've never been able to find that, but it was a nice saddle for me, at least at that time. Well, I have a proclamation for you and we, uh, certainly honor you being here tonight and Billy Cook and his, uh, legacy that he's left in Greenville and all of that. So, uh, thank you for coming. I'll read this proclamation. Whereas in 1953, Billy Cook opened a saddle shop in Greenville, Texas, hand crafting 75 saddles in his first year by the late 1950s. The man had grown so steeply that annual production scaled to approximately 12,000 saddles. He maintained quality throughout his oversight of each piece he permitted to bear the Billy Cook Maker mark. And you talked about that. Whereas Billy Cook carefully tooled leather saddles and gained widespread acclaim among rodeo competitors, ranchers, horsemen, setting a standard of functional hand to craft, handcrafted excellence through saddle, through the saddle industry. And whereas in 1991, Billy Cook secured a trademark affirming the authenticity and high artisan standard of his work. Whereas we recognize Billy Cook for his vision and trade, but for his contributions to heritage that shaped the industry and, and continues to inspire excellence. Whereas beyond his professional accomplishments, Billy Cook is remembered for his acts of kindness, his generous spirit, his unwavering dedication to community, unity, and the western tradition. Now therefore, the city council of Greenville, Texas does hereby honor and remember Billy Cook, whose vision, craftsmanship, and devotion to elevated western saddle making has made his legacy stands not only in the leather and tooling, but, but in the genera, generations of horsemen and women who used his saddles with confidence and pride. So congratulations and thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. Here's, here's the proclamation, I think. Sure you don't want to talk about this?
Well, I can talk about Billy Cook.
Well.
He's a pretty good guy.
He must have been.
And I'd give a shout out to all them people that made Billy Cook.
Yeah.
A lot of hardworking people.
Yeah. How many did it employ at one time?
It's 50, 60 in the saddle shop at all times.
Yeah.
And Greenville probably is still.
You can't throw a rock now and not hit the saddle maker.
Yeah, yeah. It's probably still saddle making capital.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate it and we're honored, we're honored to honor you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'll, uh, remind you of two placeholders in our agenda, citizens to be heard in public testimony. Citizens are invited to address the council on items that are not already scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda during citizens to be heard. And citizens are invited to address the council, uh, in public testimony on items that are on the agenda, starting tonight with item 8A, ordinance or resolutions. We do have one public hearing on the night, on tonight in item 6A. I'll just ask, are there citizens tonight? Okay, please come forward.
John Hayden.
Hey, Mayor, City Council, John Hayden, I 1:30 Doma here in Greenville. Uh, just wanted to, I was asked to talk about the Greenville Police Department Citizens Academy real quick. Like, and just encourage people to join. I was involved in that last year and then Dennis asked me to do a couple, say a couple of words about it. I was really, I really liked the, by Officer West's head of the penal code, really enjoyed that part of the whole, uh, whole part of it. But it was really interesting. I really encourage our city leader, leaders, I know Summer, I think you've been involved, Police Academy as well, the Citizens Academy. I appreciate, and you guys also can be involved with that. I think it's a really good thing that Chief does and that the hammy puts on and, and everything. I really, I enjoyed it last year and it was, it was, thought about a lot about what they do. And it's just, I try to support them, try to support the department. So I just really appreciate them putting that on. I just want to encourage our citizens as well to be part of that because I thought it's a great, it's a great week. So I just want to tell that real quick, so, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Dennis Carpenter.
Dennis Carpenter, 3703 Coyote Cross in Greenville. Um, I wanted to share two very positive things with you. Uh, one, I'm sure you know the name Sylvia Peace with the Fire Department. And while many students and young people this summer have been to vacation Bible school and summer camps and so on, Sylvia put on a program for senior citizens that was amazing for them. I had a chance to sit in as a sponsor and look what they did. And they had karaoke, uh, they had, uh, chair, beach ball, chair volleyball. Um, they had a program where you took a beach ball and they had the, like, a swim noodles and, and they beat it. One side was trying to send it down that way and the other side was trying to send it that way. And when they scored, 70 and 80 and 90-year-olds were just raising their hands in joy. And, um, I, I just never witnessed a program like that. There are a lot of programs for kids and I don't know of a program anywhere in the area that, uh, is, is for seniors. And she did a. area that, uh, is, is for seniors, and she did an amazing, an amazing job, uh, for that. It's called the Camp Wise Owl. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to mention that's unrelated is I had sent in a notice that I live on Coyote Crossing, and the road has been horrible for some time. I did what you asked us to do, fill out the form to say, hey, can you fix the road and such like that? And I'm so happy to report, the city promptly went out, got the road fixed. It wasn't exactly what you thought it would come out to. Without another phone call, they came back, did, did what is the final job and such, and they did an amazing job. So I know you get calls from people about, hey, this pothole or that pothole and such, and I just tell you, if they work within the system and just fill out the form like you do, the city did exactly what you would expect them to do, and I was very grateful. And Amazon's grateful, FedEx is grateful, UPS is grateful, Juice and they're, they're grateful, I mean, so many other vehicles gone, their bus, besides just the residents. And I wanted to thank the city for the job that they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Joyce Striling.
Joyce Striling, 6404 Buena Vista Drive, Greenville. Just found out that a road that was one-way, um, got changed, have, not sure if it's been two years or not. It was news to me. I don't know how often roads get changed like that. I know when Sale Street from I-30 to Kerry Lane was being redone, people told me that it's being changed to one-way. I said, that's temporary till the construction's done. But that was the only thing I knew about on road changes. Carver Street between, right there at Lee, out to the ballpark behind LP Waters, that's news to me. It's been that way the whole time I've been here. So I don't know how the citizens find out, other than possibly a sign coming down. I noticed that a year ago, but I thought, I called Public Works, because I thought it was just a sign was down that says, do not enter. So, thank you.
We'll check into that. Thank you. Okay. So, move to item 6A, uh, public hearing regarding the designation of certain property as a reinvestment zone. Greg?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Greg Sills, Greenville Board of Development. This is the first phase of setting up a reinvestment zone potentially, uh, for the expansion project for Royal Oak in our industrial park. You're probably familiar with Royal Oak over there. They make the pine mountain logs that, for your fireplace. So we've been working with them for several months, and the process is, to be honest with you, the process has been very slow, uh, and not on Royal Oak's part, it's been very slow on the state's part requiring the, we have to set up the reinvestment zone, uh, it has to be advertised for seven days, um, or 10 days, and then you can, you have to come before you, for you to approve the reinvestment zone, and then after this, if you approve it, then we would seek a tax abatement with the city and the county to try to get them to build an expansion of their plant here. If they don't build it here, they're going to build it in Alabama. That's what they've told us. So it's either one or the other. So either, either we can come forward through our incentive to help them, uh, build and modernize their current facility through tax abatements with the city and the county, uh, or, you know, if we don't, we just take the chance that they, uh, would leave it here and move Alabama here. But anyway, every one of these projects, these are business retention, we try to keep the company here, we try to keep them, uh, hiring our employees and that sort of thing. So the next phase of this is, if this approves, if y'all approve this tonight, then the next phase, we would post in the paper for 30 days, a advertisement for a tax amendment with the city and the county, and then after those 30 days period is up, then we get on an agenda to come before you to ask you to approve the 50% tax abatement for 10 years for the expansion. So everything that's on the ground today, on the tax rule today, doesn't get abated by state law. So, but the reason the state requires all these timings is for transparency, so taxpayer transparency. But, you know, it's taken, it'll take over two or three months to get a project done, and business likes to move faster than that most of the time. But, um, they plan on, uh, be a phased-in project over, uh, two or three years, and so there's a full presentation that they'll come and show you, and they'll be here in 30 days at that, at that meeting, uh, that we ask for the tax abatement during that time period. Uh, but it is a very worthwhile project, you know, staff recommends we move forward with it, um, and, um, look forward to any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of, uh, this reinvest, investment zone? If not, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to it? There is no one. I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 6A? Is there a second? Please vote. And it passes unanimously. There are no ordinances tonight, so start with resolutions, item 8A, and I'll just, thank you very much. Uh, I'll just ask, uh, is there any public testimony tonight? Okay. So, item 8A, consideration action on a resolution authorizing the city of Greenville to enter into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with K special water utility district to enter into a wholesale water service agreement, Summer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the K special utility district contacted me and was interested in entering into a wholesale agreement. And so, uh, where we started was going ahead and doing a memorandum of, of, and, of understanding to get that process started. They would not want to enter into that agreement until our new water treatment plant is built, which will be in 2028, uh, completed, will be in 2028. Um, and so this is just to get that process started, um, and then, um, they are asking for 1.5 million gallons per day. So once our new plant is built, um, our capacity obviously will increase with that new plant, so we would not have any issues being overcapacity or with TCQ contract, contractually or anything like that with our wholesale. So I think this would be a good start, um, for them. My understanding is, um, that they, uh, obviously they need more water, but their treatment capacity that they currently have, um, is at capacity, and they don't want to build a new treatment, uh, plant, so that's why they're coming to us and seeing if, since we are already building one, if they could just get more water from us. So that's kind of where we're at. So if you guys agree to this tonight, um, obviously Daniel, um, has read over the MOU, and we'll work with Daniel and, um, Howard, our, uh, water lawyer, uh, to work on that wholesale agreement with the wholesale rates and everything like that, and we'll get to that point. So we've got some time, obviously, before the new plant's built, so, um, we'll get that process started after this.
So this really is just giving them some assurances at some point in the future?
Yeah, and I think, um, and Daniel, I mean, this might be correct, but for TCQ purposes, I'm sure this would satisfy anything that TC, they understand, TCQ would understand that if they are at capacity at their current plant, that this is, uh, they know that they're working with us, and so this would kind of help them on that side of things from a, you know, satisfying TCQ, wouldn't you, wouldn't you say, Daniel?
Yeah, definitely. That's, uh, how it's been, uh, or we discussed that in the past when, with, uh, our water attorney about what all the TCQ counts as under contract. And this isn't a contract, but it's a memorandum of understanding that we are going to enter into a contract at, at, you know, some point later on when the water is available. Uh, and so it doesn't, uh, fully meet all the requirements that the TCQ, you know, requires, uh, to prove that you have the right number of gallons per minute, but it, uh, prevents, uh, enforcement action when there's a fallback like this, uh, with, uh, specific plans in place that are already in motion.
Is, is an MOU like this binding?
Um, it's not binding the same way that a contract would be.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, are we binding a future council from deciding to not enter into a contract with them?
It's, no. It doesn't work the same way as a contract. Uh, basically, you have a MOU to say what everybody's planning on, and then you work toward it, and if it falls apart for one reason or, or another, you don't have to look at, uh, the, you don't have to fall back to contract law on enforceability like you would if there's, like, if this fell apart because there was a storm that ripped up the area where we were going to build this, then we'd say that, you know, that part of the contract, the act of God, uh, section prevents it from being enforceable. This doesn't rise to that level. This is, uh, basically a re, recordation of both parties' sets of intent, but it doesn't rise to the level of enforceable contract to the point where the city could get sued if plans fell apart and it didn't go that direction.
Okay.
They could always get, I mean, the city can always be sued, but it wouldn't be an automatically winnable thing for them.
Any other questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council regarding item 8A?
I move that we approve. Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8A, consideration action on a resolution authorizing filing of an application to the Texas Water Development Board and authorizing the city manager and their design, and her designate to account or to act on behalf of the city in all matters related to this application. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Texas Water Development Board has, um, um, invited us to apply for, um, drinking water, uh, state funding. So as you know, we already, this will be for the new water treatment plant, so we already obviously got the Swift Water funding, um, which is low interest, um, but they also have invited us to apply for this funding as well. And so what, the difference in those two funding is, this funding will be, um, either zero interest or some principal forgiveness. So if we do actually get it, um, this is just an invitation to apply. There's no guarantee that we'll get it, um, but it is a good sign that we have been invited to apply. So this was the, one of the steps is that you, we have to pass this resolution that says you guys are okay with this application and things like that, um, and so, uh, moving forward with that. So if we could get, um, this, this amount of the funding, either at zero, zero percent interest or, uh, principal forgiveness, then that would be a great thing for us on, on that side of things. So, um, this is just kind of the first step, and then we'll move forward with each step after that, so.
Is there an application deadline?
Uh, there is August 26th, I believe.
Oh, so we're right upon it.
Yeah, that's why we needed to get this resolution. I'm pretty sure, uh, yeah, Lee emailed me about the, I'm pretty sure it was either August 23rd or August 26th, I can't remember, somewhere in there. But we should be able to get everything done in this, we just needed to get this one done.
Any, any questions? Questions? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please vote. And item 8B passes unanimously. Item 8C, consideration action on a resolution authorizing change order number nine with Adolphson and Peterson Construction AP Gulf States in the amount of $119,000.
Yes. Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, so there's a few things, uh, part of this change order, uh, some of the big ones, uh, will be in the pool area. So the first one's going to be HPC coatings, the high-performance coatings. Um, so some of the drawings showed, uh, shooting it from, from underneath and on top, and there was one drawing that didn't. So the contractor didn't spray it on top, and so working with the contractor, uh, what they've, uh, agreed to do is basically eat, replacing the roof system and putting in a new roof system to the tune of about 250,000. And then for us, it'll be about 40,000 to pay for the high-performance coating, uh, pay the painter and the materials to spray the, uh, steel in the pool area. Um, the second thing, uh, fire suppression cages on the sprinkler systems, something we kind of learned about in Allen, they had a ball hit the sprinkler systems, and it flooded the floor, run it there with gym floor. Um, so we've, we've made the adjustment to add cages in our gym to make sure that doesn't happen. Uh, and then last thing, uh, over at Reese, uh, we put in the last change order was making that steel or the concrete, um, walk path around the back of that property. And so what this would be doing is redoing the whole irrigation system, where we were going to try to tie the existing with the new. Uh, now this would be redoing the whole, uh, whole portion of that irrigation, so we can take care of that concrete. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So in working with the school bond and transparency, um, a lot of people want to know where the money's being spent, and you've done a really good job coming to explaining everything, and I appreciate that. Is there anywhere that these, uh, change orders and everything can be found online for people to see where the money's?
Not currently, no, sir. I mean...
We don't have anything posted, uh, with the change orders.
That maybe something we could work towards in the future?
I mean, you want us to put them on there? We can, I mean, we certainly could.
I mean, just because I really think, you know, the whole thing today about transparency and people want to know where the money's being spent, and, um, that we're not just, you know, really nearly spending this money. So, um, and I think that, like I said, a lot of the things like you brought up tonight about, you know, protecting the floors from being flooded and, you know, that's all great information, and, and I just want to make sure the public is aware of how we're spending the money to protect this investment.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. We can get that updated.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a second regarding items 8C?
I make a motion to approve.
Please vote. And item 8C passes unanimously. Item 8D, consideration action on the approvable contract with Auctioneer Express for surplus equipment sales.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, what this is, is entering into a contract with Auctioneer Express. They've, uh, been doing our, um, uh, auctioning off of our surplus equipment and vehicles, um, since 2008, and we usually do a year-by-year contract with them. Uh, what this, this difference in this contract was, this, we would enter into a contract and then, um, it would go year to year, no matter what, until we wanted to get out of it. So it has an out clause, so we're not stuck with them forever. Um, they've been, obviously, I told you, we've been with them since 2008. They've done a really good job, um, really good prices. Uh, their terms and conditions of this contract, um, were reviewed by the city attorney, um, and so we don't see any problems entering into it. We just need to, um, yeah, bring this before council.
There are no questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Please vote. And item 8D passes unanimously. I'll ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar. I don't know why we do this. We've done this for years and years and years and years. I don't know why.
City council meeting minutes from July 22nd. Resolution approving a multi-year agreement for the temporary closure of a segment of state highway, state right-of-way for Lee Street Jamboree. Resolution authorizing an agreement with Clean Earth Environmental Solutions for HHW Disposal Services. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an encroachment license agreement with TMPA and Creek Bend MHC LLC, and a resolution authorizing the participation of the city of Greenville in the proposed opioid settlement related to Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding any of these items on the consent calendar? If not, what is your, uh, preference regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, I pushed it multiple times. Okay, there we go.
Okay. And the consent calendar passes unanimously. City staff, city council reports, uh, A, keep Greenville beautiful, quarter three of that report. Any questions? If not, item 11, city council discussion of proposed agenda items. Is there anything anyone would like to bring forward for discussion? One of the things that we need to do is, we need to, I'd like to ask the city secretary to reschedule, you know, we talked about that toxic waste dumping that was going on and the fee schedule for that, and I think we need to just get, get the committee together, either ad hoc at some point in time, briefly before council meeting or something, to decide what we want to do there. We talked about that before and, and... We talked about that before and, so if you could, if you could, why don't you see if you can schedule the meeting with that committee 15 minutes before the start of the work session on August 26th? And that will give us... We've discussed that before, but we never came to a resolution about what we wanted to do. And I think we need to... And perhaps you need to have the director of the wastewater treatment plant over here to help us with that. So if you will, please. Yeah, 15 or 20, I guess 15 minutes is enough, or 30 minutes, whatever you decide, whatever the committee can accommodate. And then we'll make a recommendation to the council. Okay? Thank you. Any other items for discussion? If not, there are no boards and commission minutes. We will be going back into executive session. We do not anticipate a vote tonight. And thank you for coming.